...efforts properly noticed, and so we're recommending that you continue it. The other items are ready to move forward.
Okay. And on to the projection report.
On to the projection report. We will be meeting again next week on May 12th in Santa Maria, and we have about a half a day's worth of work on that day, at least as the hearing stands now. We will be recommending that the Commission cancel both your 19th, well, your 19th, May 19th hearing. And so the next meeting that we will have is on June 2nd. And we have quite a few items on that day, including review of the Coastal Commission recommended modifications to the Land Use Development Code, which I think could take longer than one hour, depending on the interest of the Commission and the public. June 9th, we are canceling because of budget hearings. And June 16th, we are also holding as a potential date to cancel, anticipating that the Commission will meet on June 30th, which is a fifth Wednesday, but in order to accommodate some projects, we were hoping that the Commission would be able to do some business that day. As you can see, we don't have anything on July 7th at the moment. I suspect that that will change. And then July 14th, we intend to take up the Los Alamos Community Plan.
Is, I notice that that's also on June 30th. Is it expected to take two hearings, or that's just a placeholder in case we need that second hearing?
Madam Chair, I think it's likely it will take two hearings, but it's, you know, it's always possible that it won't.
Okay.
Really depends on the level of changes that the Commission would like to undertake.
Okay, great, thank you.
Given public comment. And I think that's as far as I'll go out. You can see there are other, a few other items projected out further.
Okay, great. Any questions by Commissioners on our long-range agenda? None? Good, okay. Then I'd like to move on to public comment, and this is the time set aside to allow public testimony on items not on today's agenda. And I see that we have Mr. Thorndike here with us. Good morning, Mr. Thorndike.
Good morning, Commissioners and Commissioners. I'm John Thorndike, and I am always glad to come in town here and get here a day early and catch all that's going on in this place on television. It's marvelous. There's great things going on here, and very efficient, too. However, I received this packet just minutes before I came in here, walked in here, and it's a lot of pages. And it's from, it's from the title company who's representing you all, you know? And it's gonna be, I've gotta read it by tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. And it wasn't the fault of the county. It was received on my birthday today at 8:50 a.m. due to error of delivery from Veterans Home of California at Chula Vista. They received it in time and didn't get it to me. And this is routine, by the way. It's almost like doing the hurdles, you know? I did the hurdles, and I got a scholarship for it. And these guys don't know how to play games. Anyway, I'm very pleased to see that the number three thing is estimated closing statement of $30,000 if Mr. Thorndike claims a loss or no gain. I can guarantee I've had a loss over the period of years. That includes $100,000 that I put in for lawyers. Now, the case was awarded by the court to me and gave me, gave 13 instructions to the county to execute the ruling, and it was Case 176081, a quiet titled case. It was not for money, it was to resolve issues. And 21 years have gone by. I don't blame the county, but I'll tell you what it's all about. It's because of the separation of powers. We, the county wanted, the county attorneys wanted the court to give them a special master to guide them through 13 steps. And the court does not do that, and the Supreme Court of the United States is ruling on these things now. It just does, it's a separation of powers issue. But I've been the victim of it for all these years. And I just want the record to show that that's what cost me. I won the case, I won the, I won the court costs, but I didn't win the high price of lawyers. Since then, I went to a seminar at our City College, and we had all those lawyers and judges running the seminar. And I was one of them. And I'm not a lawyer, but I happened into it. And I remember the judge that ruled on it said, you know, he said, "Our outfit was out there," he said, "having a picnic." And we came to the conclusion, we couldn't afford ourselves if we needed a lawyer. And so the thing was on how to deal with these things outside of it. And I've been trying all these years to do it through eminent, any way I can. I'll do it voluntarily through eminent domain if needed, but it's gotta be right. And the middle part of my property will make it three parcels. I'm afraid that that is against the Subdivision MAP Act, and that's why I've been cautioning the county and the title company I haven't been able to get to on this matter. And thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thorndike, always nice to see you. Thank you.
Okay. I gotta get on the record.
Thank you. Next is our Planning Commissioners informational reports.
My, excuse me, not the way I meant to say it. This is Ted Park.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I did attend one session of the Brown Bag series that Planning and Development is sponsoring. I was here on April 21st, and I really want to commend the department for having these. People brought their lunch, and they were here for two hours. And what we, what I viewed was a video that came from, I guess, the recent American Planners Association. The title of the seminar that I attended was Integrating Energy Elements and Climate Change Elements in Planning. Some of the salient points that I picked up by watching the sessions was with the impact of climate change. And, you know, we think about floodings, impacts on infrastructure, but they also stress the idea of the impacts, possible impacts on agriculture, you know, with climate change. Another point that was made was the Climate Action Plan, which we are working on right now. The very important need for interplay between that plan and then community plans. They, one of the speakers was from Colorado, and they mentioned the state seems to be, you know, getting behind the new energy economy related to what we'll be looking at later today. They talked about capital improvement plans, and they mentioned that the American Planning Association has a database so that, you know, different communities can go to see how, you know, just within the county structure itself, they can become more energy efficient. They had a speaker from Marin County. They have a commitment to be carbon neutral in six years. They are really stressing retrofitting on what they have and infill upgrades. I think the other point they made was having the access to services, capital information, and renewable energy with incentives and with financing. And I think our recent move in the county to the energy proposal that has been considered really fits in that mode. So I think Santa Barbara County, we've got a long way to go, but we seem to be, you know, I always think of Santa Barbara County as, you know, on the cutting edge, but some of these other communities certainly have impressive programs. And just in closing, I'd like to say, they mentioned an old Cherokee saying, "The success of a rain dance depends upon the timing." And I think that's maybe a motto we could use, you know, as we look ahead and try to stay abreast of energy and climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no others, we'll move on to, I'm sorry. Please.
I was just waiting my turn.
Okay, good.
I just wanted to mention to the Commission, following up on a case that I had raised for the Commission a few weeks ago, Save the Plastic Bag Coalition versus City of Manhattan Beach. It was an interesting case, actually. The Court of Appeal holding that a full environmental impact report was needed for the city to ban plastic bags, a little counterintuitive. And I suggested that the Supreme Court might be interested in that topic, and indeed they are. Last week, they granted review of that case, which vacates the Court of Appeal decision. And in the coming months, we'll keep an eye on this as to, I think, the standard for, or at least further guidance for local government on the need for full environmental review, particularly on those projects that may arguably be beneficial to the environment.
Thank you. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Do I hear any motion for approval of April 7th?
No.
Okay, thank you, a second.
I'll second, but is that the one I have to make the correction? Yes, April 7th?
Yeah, if you'd like to second, then I'll open it for discussion.
I will second.
Okay, great. So any comments, changes?
Yes, on page three, on the minute of April 7th, there was an action, and I've already brought it the attention of staff, but where it says, "Item 2, Action, Commissioner Brooks moved and then seconded by..."
Okay, Commissioner Brooks, right. Who was that seconded by, do you know? Staff?
I did look this up and compared it to my notes. It was Commissioner Cooney, according to my notes.
Okay, great. Any other changes for the April 7th? And I do note that at the top of those pages, you have the hearing of April 14th. That's another, okay, that needs to be changed. All right, thank you. Okay, so all those in favor of...
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Please, thank you.
Does my light not work?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, okay. On the page, which has page three, April 14th, but actually was part of the 7th, I was concerned about the language of item 3A, which indicates that in order to be exempt from a development plan, only one agricultural structure of 15,000 square feet could be allowed, and all other agricultural structures would be limited to 10,000 square feet. I had a note to go back and check the actual language of the proposed ordinance, but in the absence of that, I recall the discussion and action not being limited to agricultural structures, but to being any structures limited to 15,000 square feet. And if that's the recollection of others, we should make sure these minutes are in And further, I just think it's a little bit unclear that you have to have an ag structure of as much as 15,000 square feet. In other words, if it's, if it's over 10,000 square feet, then I think the limitation on subsequent structures jumps into place. But that, these are my recollections, and I'm looking for clarification.
You know, as you bring it up, I don't, I don't think this is as clear as it could be or should be. I think it needs, I'd have to go back, and my memory isn't as fresh as yours to consider that, but I'm, I agree with you. I don't think it was about an agricultural structure. I don't specifically, Ms. Black.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, I have the same recollection you do, which is that it was all structures, because we certainly weren't trying to be more restrictive on agricultural structures than non-agricultural structures. I do think the ordinance language is clear, but can we trail these and let me just take a look?
Yes, let's do that.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest we even continue it to next week if necessary to get the minutes right. We just want everything to line up and not mislead the public.
Yeah, that would be my preference, is to consider these minutes at our next meeting, if the Commission doesn't have any problems with that, just so that we can make sure that it is very clear since this was a change. Okay. Then we have a motion on the table to approve them, and I'm wondering if we can get a revision to that motion to...
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this item.
Okay, thank you, and a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, and all in favor of continuing these to our next hearing, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. We'll move on to approving the minutes of April 14th.
I'll move approval.
Thank you, and a second.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Any discussion? I had one question from Ms. Black concerning the transportation fees that they were given a reduction on. Would that necessarily show in the minutes? I didn't see that, and I didn't know how that would have been captured.
Madam Chair, my recollection on that item is that the Commission didn't take action to reduce those fees, that the Public Works Transportation Division had already...
Done that.
Reduced the fee.
Okay, okay. Even though it didn't appear that way in our documentation?
I think that's correct.
Okay.
I think that Public Works is actually responsible for that.
Just did that, okay. All right, fine, okay. Then if there are no other comments or discussion or changes, then...
I have a comment, Madam Chair.
Please.
Madam Chair, last week, I received an inquiry from Mr. Ryan Stasi, who is the Development Utilities Director for the City of Long Po. He still had not received a copy of the document. And in the same week, Tammy Weber had called me concerning, this is Sweeney, the Sweeney Road Winery. They're concerned about, because there's gonna be some well, I mean, some sewer, what do you call the...
Septic.
Septic tanks dug in, and they're close to the river, close to their water supply. And so there was a concern. It may not affect it, however, they wanted to see where everything was gonna be done. So I requested Ms. Weber at the meeting to send the plans to Mr. Stasi, and I informed Mr. Stasi that he was going to receive them. He talked to me a few days ago, and he said he still had not received them. I indicated to him that they might have been sent to Ms. Pelster, the Community Development Director, and that's where it ends, and I hope that they come to the attention of Mr. Stasi, because he's the one that has to look at it. All right, make sure that...
Okay, great, thank you. Then all those in favor of approving the minutes of April 14th, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, the minutes of April 14th are approved. And let's move, oh, and I think at this time, what I'd like to do is to go to our director, Dr. Russell.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. I have a brief presentation today covering a couple of board hearings on April 20th, and then yesterday. On April 20th, the Board finished up the actual approval of the Coastal Impact Assistance Program allocations, which I reported to you previously. In case you wanted to know exactly what those were, I have them. And they also amended formally the CREF guidelines, consistent with their previous decision, to allow them maximum flexibility going into the budget hearings as to how CREF money should be used, whether it should be allocated to purchase of land, or whether it should be used for projects. And we just completed a abbreviated project, outside project acceptance period. We received a number of projects, and those are now going, undergoing evaluation and will be considered, I believe, at the June 1st hearing. Prior to the budget hearings, there's still a possibility that CREF money will be used to fund some of the county projects, such as the Gaviota, for next year only, the Gaviota Plan, Santa Claus Lane Project, and the Summerland Project. But it remains to be seen exactly how that's all going to play out. Yesterday, we had a couple of set hearings. We have a report on our onshore oil, our onshore petroleum operations, and the data reporting efforts that have been going on, collaborating with IT and FIRE and Building and Safety to produce some useful databases. And also, we are, we set the hearing for a change to the SEQUA guidelines, which would remove the requirement that the environmental coordinator for a publicly initiated project come from outside the department. That requirement has resulted in the need to hire environmental coordinators from outside the county, and we've spent a quarter million dollars over the last several years on that. And it's our assessment that that has added very little, if any, value to the process. And when you consider the role of staff, the Planning Commission, the Board, County Council, and the public in what is a very public process, we don't see the need to continue that, and we think that the savings of money warrant the change. So that's coming. And then we began the Botanic Garden appeals yesterday, which we got through the staff report, and some of the public testimony, not all, will be coming back on the 18th to continue hearing public testimony. We anticipate that it will take that hearing and some of another hearing to finish that item. And then one other thing I should just report, and one of the reasons being that Commissioner Cooney is involved in this. There was an informational briefing for the Montecito Planning Commission regarding the issue of the removal of large old eucalyptus trees on East Valley Road, and the situation is, the community is very upset that some of these trees have been removed. Supervisor Carvahal actually coordinated a meeting with all the parties to discuss these issues. The bottom line is, is that the county does not have permit jurisdiction over these trees. It's a Caltrans project. And so the Montecito Planning Commission wrote a letter, expressed to Caltrans, expressing their concerns and their hopes that Caltrans would communicate in earnest with the community and not remove any trees in, or not issue any permits that would allow the removal of trees in a hasty fashion. So that's another, that's an issue which I thought you might find of interest. That's what I had to tell you about, and be happy to answer any questions.
No? No? Okay. All right, then, we, I'd like to, we're going to be continuing the anter appeal of the Hassan Residential Units Project, and I wonder if Commissioner Brooks would make that motion to do that?
Yes, I move that we continue today's item 2, anter appeal of the Hassan Residential Units Projects to June 2nd.
Second.
Okay, great, thank you. So all in favor of that motion of continuing the appeal, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, let's continue to the June 2nd meeting then. Okay, then we'll move on to our standard agenda. And Mr. Villalobos, if you would please read that into the record.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Tricia Knight on behalf of Verizon Wireless to consider case number 09CUP2, application filed on January 14, 2009, and to determine the project exempt pursuant to sections 15302 and 15303 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
And we'll begin by with any ex parte and site visit disclosures. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I visited the site last Friday.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valencia.
I visited the site on Sunday.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cooney?
Madam Chair, I did not make a special trip. I could not justify it, having been to Rigetti High School three times this spring already. I'm well familiar with the site.
Great, and I have no ex parte or site visit disclosure, since I wasn't able to make it up there. Okay, and Ms. Lowry, welcome.
Thank you, and good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. My name is Megan Lowry. I'm the project planner on the project before you, Verizon Telecommunications Facility at the Rigetti High School. This is under case number 09CUP2, which is a major conditional use permit. Actually, before we begin, I'd like to make two minor edits to the staff report. We found two typos on page two. Under section 3.0, second sentence, there's a missing number five. It should read 35.44.010.C.4 in the reference under the jurisdiction section number. The second typo is in section 4.0, again referencing the Land Use Development Code section. The section number should read 35.44.010.C.4A1 instead of 3. And with that, we'll begin. The proposed project is for a telecommunications facility to service the Santa Maria area, located at Rigetti High School. Rigetti High School is located between, on Foster Road, East Foster Road and Bradley Road. It's highlighted on upper left-hand quarter, corner in purple. As you may be well aware, adjacent to this is the St. Joseph's High School. Point this out because there are similar existing facilities at St. Joseph's High School to the proposed project before you today. The proposed project site would be at the Rigetti High School in the track and field area on one of the light standards. Two similar facilities currently exist at the St. Joseph's High School on their track field facilities. To give you a little bit of context and show you what an existing facility like this would look like, provided some pictures. Here's the St. Joseph's High School site, and here's a view of the existing light standards with two similar facilities on the right to light standards. And here's another picture of a closer up of one of the existing facilities at St. Joseph's High School. Here's Rigetti High School. The proposed project would be on the upper left-hand corner, the track and field on the left of the bleachers, along Larch Avenue. The proposed project would include replacing one of the existing light standards. It would be replacing it with a slightly thicker pole. The current pole is 20 inches in diameter and 91 feet tall. The replacement pole would be 24 inches in diameter, also 91 feet tall. The replacement pole would therefore not exceed the current height of the pole, it would just be a little bit more substantial to carry the load of antennas. The facility consists of six six-foot panel antennas. These will be mounted in two different heights at 73 feet and 80 feet, RAD center, which is the center of the antenna. heights at 73 feet and 80 feet, RAD center, which is the center of the antenna. To support these antennas, there would be an equipment area that consists of a 12-foot by 20-foot shelter, a backup generator, a four-by-four cabinet, and surrounded by 12-foot, 10 to 12-foot chain link fence with lid to prevent tampering from the high school students or those passing by. In addition to the equipment, there would be landscaping proposed along Larch Avenue in the current landscaped sidewalk area. Here's a photo simulation of the proposed facility. You can see the antennas up top. The shelter down below would be painted to match some of the existing buildings at Rigetti High School. This is at request of the high school. Santa Maria Joint Union High School District asked that Verizon be consistent with some of their existing accessory buildings on-site. There would be access stairs below, and again, the proposed landscaping to help provide some additional screening and to complete the context of the existing landscaping at the site. Here's a second view of a photo simulation also provided by the applicant. You see the antennas above on the proposed equipment area. Some of the issues that we looked at in our review is the land use issue. To this, we like to clarify that telecommunications facilities are allowed in all zone districts, including residential, recreational, public institutional. This comes from the FCC's requirements that we can't have a blanket ban across telecommunications facilities. We can affect their siting, location, design. We can't straight-out ban facilities. So, in response, our telecommunications ordinance has provided specific design criteria for each type of zone district and type of siting. There are technology requirements for these types of facilities. They do require line of sight, and therefore, they do require some type of height. Usually, this can be accomplished in two different means, either using existing topography, so hillsides, mountaintops, or if there's a flat landscaped area, we usually would cite them on tall structures. This either uses existing structures, if there's a tall enough building, pole or something that could be used. If not, then it usually includes erecting a new tall structure to provide, again, to provide that line of sight so it can see the coverage area. Some of the siting constraints at this particular area is that it is a relatively flat landscape. There aren't hillsides in the immediate area. And there are limited vertical structures. There aren't very tall buildings in the area. It's mostly comprised of a dense residential area of homes. This dense residential area also provides for a lot of smaller parcels, not much vacant large room for siting of a facility. So, in response, this proposal uses some of the existing tall infrastructure that does exist in the area, which is the light standard. As far as aesthetics, using the existing light standard, or rather, replacing it allows us to have no net increase of vertical features. So, we're not adding to the vertical features in the area. It is a utility infrastructure with lights, which is consistent with the use. And it is similar to the design at the facilities at St. Joseph's High School. Last, we have health and safety. Proposed facility is required to comply with the FCC's health and safety standards at all times. As a part of this, the project review required the applicant submit a, an emissions report showing, demonstrating compliance with these standards. The proposed facility, as proposed, would operate at less than 1% of the applicable FCC limit for this type of facility. We had a part of the report consider the different areas. So, at ground level, it'd be 0.063% of the limit. At the top of the bleachers, it would be even lower, at 0.54% of the limit, sorry, 0.054% of the limit. And at the nearest residential second-story elevation, it would be 0.050% of the limit, which is approximately 90 feet away. With this, the project does comply well within the FCC required limits. Therefore, staff would recommend your commission make the required findings for the project as specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including CEQA findings. Determine the project is exempt pursuant to Sections 15302 and 15303 of CEQA, and approve the project subject to the conditions as included in Attachment C. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. Any questions by Commissioners? Commissioner Valencia?
That's all right.
Okay, let's start at that end. We'll start with Ms. Brooks.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Brown. Yes, I did have a question from staff. It says, I'm just looking in the page, under jurisdiction on page two, that this requires, this is considered a Tier 4 because it's, it's 97 feet away from the, says, the closest residential property, whereas the recommendation is for 300 feet. So, it bumps it up from a Tier 3 to a Tier 4. Do I have that? Could you explain that a little bit for me?
Correct. Commissioner, Chair, and Commissioner Brooks, that is correct. So, actually, this type of facility, if it didn't include a replacement pole, would be allowed under a Tier 2 facility permit. But because this requires a replacement of the pole, it's considered a new structure. New structures are required to be set back 300 feet or five times the height, whichever is greater from residential parcels. If they can't meet that standard, then it bumps it up to a Tier 4. So, they are allowed to be within that, within 300 feet of residential parcels, or actually on a residential parcel itself. But it requires a major conditional use permit and review by your commission, if that's the case.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is with regard to the tower and then the attachment of the antenna to it. The diagrams show two clusters, I presume, of three antenna each. Is that correct? So, a total of six, but in, in two different clusters right adjacent to each other on the pole?
Commissioner Cooney, that's correct. There's two different clusters of three panel antennas, one on top and one directly below it, pointing in three different sectors of the area.
The reason for two, is it redundancy, or are they aimed in different directions? Or, I'm not sure why two sets are required as opposed to one.
Commissioner Cooney, that's a requirement. So, Verizon needs that amount of antennas. In order to fit them on the pole, they had to break them up into two different clusters. So, if they were proposing a new structure somewhere, most likely, they would have a triangle, or so they would have two sets pointing each way. Because they're trying to mount it to this pole, it had to be broken up into two different heights.
Is that also the case at St. Joseph, that there are two clusters as opposed to one?
The facilities at St. Joseph's currently each have one cluster. The county has received an application to add to those, to have a second cluster at one of those, now that they've needed additional antennas. So, currently, there's only one set on each pole. They have an application in to add to that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was my question. I was noticing that it was very difficult to find the azimuth of the antennas, but it's buried in A2. And in there, it gives the azimuth of the two sets of antennas, but it doesn't give the beam width. So, you don't know what the coverage is. You know, I suspect that there is a beam width enough to cover 360 degrees, or is it directional in some areas? It's just not clear that technically it should be in there.
Ms. Chair, Commissioner, we can have the applicant respond to that question if you'd like?
Okay, that would be fine. That would be fine. And I also noted that the, in the B2 schematic buried down there, we almost need binoculars to look at it, or magnifying glass. There's the two sets of azimuths, and it says the sectors A, B, and C, but it doesn't identify what they're for, whether they're for telecommunications or video or whatever. So, it's not clear. Again, on the question of Commissioner Cooney, you know, just not very clear. All right, thank you. That's what I have.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. Another question I have of staff, and is the idea of colocation. You know, we've discussed that as we've looked at several of these telecommunications projects. Could you answer for me? Is, does, is there any colocation going on right now with the facility at St. Joe's High School? And let's say if this project is approved, would colocation be a potential at this location also?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks, the facilities at St. Joseph's, there's, so there's four light standards at St. Joseph's High School. Currently, two of them have similar facilities, telecom facilities mounted on them. And as I said, we're having an application come in to add some additional antennas to one of those. One of the other poles has plans for colocation, which is why the applicant wasn't able to go there. The fourth pole was deemed by the school to be, they didn't want facilities on that pole because its proximity to the main school buildings. So, they requested that, you know, facilities not be mounted on that fourth pole. So, that takes care of the four poles at St. Joseph's High School, which is why this carrier has chosen to move to Rigetti High School. In that respect, there are other poles at Rigetti High School that could potentially also be, have antennas mounted to them if we had another carrier. Four different carriers is pretty much our max. We don't really have, we have maybe one other carrier that services the county right now. And so, there may be potential for them, but not many more exist in the county.
Madam Chair, I'd like to respond a little bit further to Commissioner Brooks' point on colocation. And that is to just note that our county land use code describes and discusses colocation in terms of telecommunications facilities with other telecommunications facilities. But there is a 2009 Federal Communications Commission declaratory ruling that states that from the federal perspective, colocation would involve even the situation we're looking at today, and that is a telecommunications facility and an existing light pole, or on a light pole. So, the federal definition of colocation's a little bit broader. It doesn't have to be telecommunication with telecommunication. It could be telecommunication on some other structure. So, just, just for context, as you consider this and other applications.
I just have a follow-on question. Would it, is it the case when, let me back up. The applicant is requesting, or is proposing these antennas at this certain height, and colocation would therefore, if it was be on the same pole, I think, would it be at a lower height? Therefore, it may not, as we've seen in some, it may not be satisfactory in order to meet the objectives of the applicant. So, colocation then, in this instant, I understand what generally it means, but how would that work in this case? It may not be possible to colocate just because it wouldn't provide the kind of coverage, because they're right at the top of the pole. Can you just speak to that briefly?
Sure, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Applicants come in for their own coverage objective, you're correct. And whether or not they can achieve that at certain heights or not is really their analysis with their radio frequency engineers. There's a second tier to that. So, even if they were to come in on the same pole and they think that they can achieve their objectives, planning staff would still have to look at that in the context of aesthetics and see if that is over, you know, overloading the pole visually, or, you know, overly saturating a particular site. So, that would be in our review. If we found that there was another pole that, you know, adding to that would be better than colocating a bunch on one, that'd be part of our review.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Valencia?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I failed to ask one question. The other one was on bandwidth. When you speak of the effective radiated power of 1,200 watts, that's part of the description. The other is the frequency, and the frequency would be the bandwidth, and it doesn't say there. I suspect it's in the 900, but it would be good if it was in the document. So, that's a technical aspect that the applicant should tell you. All right, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I think this will be my last question of staff at this point. I think, as in my reading of the staff report, we have a new tier, fairly recent, new policy about, the tiered policy here. My question was, I saw somewhere where we used to have school buffers, and then the new policy took out the concept of school buffer. And now, we're putting these towers on school property. Could you just maybe inform me, you know, how did the policy change? Why did the policy change? That at one point, you know, there was a school buffer area, and now, we're going to, you know, we're looking at all the public institutions having, you know, these facilities on them, on the actual property. This is kind of before my time when this was done, and that's why I'm asking that question. I want to make sure I understand how we went from one policy to another.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, Commissioner Brooks, at one time, our telecommunications ordinance did include some language about providing a buffer around schools. And to my knowledge, and County Council maybe can speak to this a little bit more clear, that was specifically taken out. And it was some time ago, around 2000, when we amended the ordinance at that time, because it was seen as a blanket prohibition contradicting the federal regulations that local jurisdictions can't prohibit these types of facilities. So, that was my understanding. Maybe Council can speak to that.
Mr. Ghazani?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks, that's accurate. And we have some fairly recent guidance from the Federal Communications Commission, again, in their November 2009 declaratory ruling, just making clear that state and local governments are not allowed to regulate wireless communications based on perceived health risks of radio frequency emissions, so long as the facility complies with the federal regulation. That's the end of the discussion. So, in this case, if we had blanket zones based on perceived health risks, or that could be argued to be based on perceived health risk, we'd be running afoul of the Telecommunications Act.
Okay. Ms. Lowry, I have a couple of questions. Noticing for this particular project, can you just briefly describe it? Was it, what I'm interested in is particularly for the high school, for the students at the school, were families noticed? How, how did that occur? It's just basically your standard noticing radius, whatever that might have been. Can you tell me what that was for this project?
Commissioner Chair, yes, that's correct. We follow the standard noticing procedures as outlined in our land use development code, because it is a new structure that's visible within residential area. We require the 1,000-foot noticing for this particular structure of occupants and owners. Aside from that, we have the posting that's also required on-site and at the counter.
So...
Oh, and newspaper prior to this hearing.
Okay. And was there any effort, do you know, through the school, did they, I mean, I don't, you can do it on-site, but to put a notice on a light pole away from where most students, except perhaps some of the athletes, I'm just wondering if most parents would be informed of this. They probably wouldn't be, just because of the way the notice is posted, or where it's posted.
Madam Chair, maybe the applicant can speak to some of their outreach. My, I can add that the Santa Maria Union Joint Union High School District reviewed this project.
Okay, they did. So, it was on their agenda and...
They looked at it and also provided design recommendations. But the applicant can provide you more detail.
All right. Another question for you is, you mentioned, when you were describing the equipment shelter, about a lid. Is that just the wire mesh that's over the top of that to prevent debris going in between the fence and the structure?
That's correct. It's the same chain link as, as the rest of the fence, and that was to avoid tampering or...
Kids climbing in?
Climbing in.
Okay.
The applicant can also speak more towards that requirement. I think that was also a recommendation of the high school.
Okay, that's, and the last question I have is concerning landscaping. I know a project, which I've talked to you about on North Fairview, they never completed their landscaping. And I'm wondering, if you could put that slide up, I think it's your third, your third slide, that shows the completed landscaping, which is, yeah, that one, which is similar, I guess, to that which already exists. I think it's appropriate, but I want to make sure that it gets done. And I'm not sure, considering that one on North Fairview, how we're going to make sure that that happens.
Madam Chair, it'd be an ongoing permit compliance effort, as is all landscaping, because the school does already have existing landscaping and irrigation at this location. We are confident that the irrigation system would be sufficient to feed the landscaping that is proposed. Also, the school is taking ownership of making sure that this is landscaping that they also would agree to, and it would be con... would agree to, and it would be consistent with their landscape program.
And what is, you're the permit compliance person, I presume?
Correct.
So how will you follow up? I just want to make sure that it happens on this project.
Conditions require that they maintain landscaping for the life of the facility. We do an initial landscape check when we, during compliance, the initial construction installation, and then six months after, we go back and check to ensure the safe, the health of the plants that have been installed, and also the status of the irrigation system, make sure it's working and operating. If there's any failed landscaping, we require the applicant to then replace the landscaping and maintain it. We don't release the landscaping bond until sufficient establishment of the landscaping.
Is there any oversight by the school district on this? So that if this doesn't happen, or that they work with you, or how will that be affected? I just, I'm somewhat concerned because of that project in North Fairview, where it's not happened, that it could happen here as well. So...
It could be required as part of their lease requirements to comply, you know, to keep their landscaping maintained. Also, because it is a condition of approval, any notice to our office of failed landscaping would initiate a compliance review to make sure they're not...
Well, I guess my question is somewhat broader than that, and thank you for the information. It's, is the school district working with the applicant in any way, that there's coordination? I realize that it probably is for construction and some other issues, but is there somebody that's sort of been appointed by the school district, do you know, that's working? And perhaps the applicant can answer. Okay, they'll have that. Ms. Black?
Madam Chair, that's what I was going to suggest. We really don't know a lot about the arrangement between the operator and the high school district.
Okay, that's fine. All right, then Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The landscaping in this, all this area outside, I drove by there, it's all very nice, extremely nice. It's the area beyond going further east that is complete disarray. The parkway, or whatever it's called, is just unkept. But all this area where the poles are is kept very nicely and very green and very well-maintained. The other thing I had to say was in Ragetti, when we approved the antennas in Ragetti, they were, I think, believe it was about six years ago, and they're about half the height of these antennas. These antennas are pretty high, being way up, let me see, where's my... These antennas are way up here. The ones at Ragetti are about this level, I think. You recall, they were over at top of a little building right by the Jip. So these are very high, and they're good, I think there isn't any problem. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney?
Madam Chair, there are a couple of concerns that, you know, I'll be raising later in the hearing with regard to the equipment building. But I did note that the NBAR considered this project at its February 26 meeting. Ms. Lowry included the minutes of that meeting. One of the comments from the NBAR was to reconsider access, consider moving the stairwell and adding landscaping along residential areas. We've had talk of landscaping, but has the stairwell been moved from its originally proposed location? Ms. Lowry?
Chair Commissioners, no, that actually hasn't. So after this meeting, the project went back to the high school with consideration of the request from the BAR. The high school then responded with their requirements for access and why they needed the stairwell there and landscaping. They provided a letter to the BAR, and the project has returned to BAR since, however it was, after the docketing of the staff report. The applicant can speak to the specific discussions at the BAR if you'd like.
Then if I might follow, the second question, Ms. Lowry, really pertains to the exemption request. You're going to need to listen to this, so whenever you're ready, let me know. Okay? The exemption determination is that the project isn't required to undergo CEQA review because of two subsections. And in your explanation for that, which is our attachment B, you indicate that, you indicate that what we're doing is replacing an existing pole, so that's replacement of structures, I understand that. And 15303 is new equipment and facilities. Now, it's not clear from your explanation that you applied these same analyses to the building. But I'm assuming, because you didn't mention any other subsection, that you determined the building was sufficiently small, even with the chain link fence, even with the stairwell, that it was exempt from environmental review. Yet, in your staff report elsewhere, you talk about two issues at least that raise concern. One is aesthetics, and the BARs addressed that. The second is the generator, which sits in the enclosure but outside the building. Maybe we'll hear from the applicant about that. But apparently, that does require some testing on a regular basis, and there is some noise emanating from that. Compared to other equipment structures that we've seen around the county on installations, this is quite obtrusive, particularly from the residences on Larch Avenue. So I have, my major concern is the equipment building. I don't know if you have any information that pertains to the exemption, but I at least think an argument could be made that we should be looking at a negative declaration here.
Any other questions by the commission? If not, then I'd like to invite up Ms. Knight, the agent's applicant.
Good morning. My name is Tricia Knight. I am representing Verizon Wireless, and I think I'll start with the most recent question, if that's okay. Excuse me, we did go back before the Board of Architecture Review last week, and their concerns were equal to yours with respect to the equipment building and the visibility along Larch Avenue. I have a schematic, I don't know if we have an overhead, but what they've asked us to do is take the stairwell and zigzag it, if you will, being that we'd kind of bring it in this way, then up, then over. Therefore, we would be able to landscape almost in front of the entire front on Larch Avenue. So therefore, reducing the visibility of that. We did address the Board of Architecture Review's questions, and the school board had responses to their questions with respect to security. And that's why the stairwell is preferred to be on this side. But I believe we did reach the overall goal, which was to reduce the visibility. If you did happen to drive down this street directly across from this, the houses actually have a six-foot fence. This is their backyard. So the visibility is literally from the corners of the blocks on each side. And so I believe the landscaping and the revised design of the stairwell will accomplish the goal here of reducing the visibility with landscaping almost to nothing. You'll just be, basically be seeing the top of the chain link fence and the green roof as it would match the other buildings on site.
I have a question about the chain link fence.
Absolutely.
Is it going to be the one with, to match existing, or is it going to be blackmeshed?
We were proposing to match existing. That was, just seemed to be the simplest, to keep it all harmonious on site.
Okay. Go ahead.
And then I wanted to maybe answer some of your azimuth questions, or kind of why we have to have six antennas versus three. Verizon Wireless operates at three different frequencies because they handle voice and data and video and all the things that our phones do now. So they operate at 700, 800, and 1,900 megahertz. So they have one antenna per sector for each of those frequencies. And so in the past, what we would do is we would locate all antennas at one elevation. Therefore, the standoff from that pole would be quite large, the visual impact gets to be a little bulky. So when we split them this way, we're able to flesh-mount them and reduce that profile to make the visual impacts as minimal as possible. As far as the bandwidth, they are directional, but being that we have no topography, that's limiting, you know, mountains or trees or anything like that, this is going to cover for a good five miles. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Probably, it would be good to have it in the document so that, you know, it's information for other people to always see that we, all these things are covered.
Absolutely. And why do we have to have what we're having, and what does it mean? Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Was consideration given to enclosing the generator as opposed to having it outside in the fenced area? In other words, reducing the noise by...
Like a noise attenuation type structure. You know, the Board of Architecture Review did not bring that up. Have you ever had, I was just asking, Megan, just from a technical standpoint, I'm not really familiar if we can put something over a generator because the heat has to escape. Now, mind you, these generators, the batteries inside the cabinets last for 48 hours. So this only comes on in extreme emergency. You are right, it does have to be tested approximately four times per year for about an hour to make sure everything is functioning properly. But other than that, this thing is silent. So this is only for extreme emergencies. And so I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. Megan, have you ever had a generator with any noise attenuation over it?
Commissioners and Tricia, no, we haven't had any structures covering generators. To my knowledge, the other options that we've seen in the past are generators that are not stored on site, and they're only brought to the site in the event of emergency. That'd be the other option that we've seen to date, but other than that, no, most generators are not enclosed.
Well, the ones, if I may, there's usually CMU or the walls around them that hide them, and that helps to attenuate some of the noise.
Correct. There's walls, there's not an overarching structure.
Right, correct.
During the fires, Megan is right, in the past, we've had where we just pour the concrete pad so that in the event of an emergency, Verizon can just roll the generator on site. But during the Hesse-Cede fire, that became a really big problem, only because to roll as many generators as were needed for the sites that were possibly in jeopardy of going down, they didn't have enough of them. So Verizon's kind of really trying to protect, basically, you know, the people to, when it comes to an emergency, to have the generator there that it's just ready to go. Because in an extreme emergency, it does become a problem to roll them all on site.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Well, I would like to, I don't want to suggest a solution, but I'd like to at least see the issue of noise attenuation addressed on site. If there's going to be a permanent installation of the generator, and I'm living anywhere in that neighborhood, four times a year, it's going to be an irritant, and it seems to me at the time of initial construction is the best time to really protect against that, muffle the noise, if you will, and not hamper the generator's operation.
So just making sure I understand, you would prefer that we do some type of study to figure out what noise attenuation we could use that could accomplish your goal as well as not hinder the operation of the generator?
Well, I heard you say that you really haven't had experience in what kinds of solutions may have been used in other installations, and I certainly haven't. But I think we share the concern over the existence of a problem as minimal as you've indicated it might be. We should have that information and see what we can do. It's not going to increase the aesthetic issue at all, but it would address the noise issue, which is the other one that drives me to the conclusion that an exemption from CEQA may not be appropriate. But if we can take care of it, then maybe we can go with what we have.
Go ahead. Ms. Black?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, I'd just direct your attention to Condition 19 to see if that adequately addresses your concerns, or if you wanted to...
I note that the condition says it shall not exceed 65 dB A at the property boundaries. Now, is that, which boundaries? Is the boundary of the area that, where the generator is residing, or is it the...
No, in this, Madam Chair, in this case, I don't think that the distinction is great because the property boundary is right at the street.
So that would be...
So I think it's a very...
Okay. So has there been any, I guess this is a question for Ms. Knight then, has there been any testing or any information about just what is the noise level of the generators?
We are, and I know Megan and I have actually, we do have to submit information to the APCD regarding the noise and emissions, and so we are below this level. But I think, what if I understand correctly, the condition would allow us for some acoustic shielding if we have the noise levels from the property line, which is actually the fence line where our site is, across the street, and see if it exceeds that. And if it does, then we would be required to do some shielding for acoustic noise.
Okay. And Commissioner Cooney, does that help you with your concern?
It would be my preference to have the acoustic shielding in place at the time we approve, in other words, to identify the noise level, to actually have the generator in operation. Now, I agree that it may be below 65 or just below 65 dB A at the property line, which is, you know, right there, fairly close to where the stairs go up. But it seems to me that Verizon can make the commitment to reduce the noise level below that. And so I guess I'm asking for more than the minimum in connection with this installation. You know, we haven't addressed the appearance of the building. It could have been designed in a way to reduce the impact. I appreciate the effort at landscaping, but if we can satisfy my concern to reduce the noise level of the generator, I would not oppose the project. But just to have this condition as vague as it is, I am concerned that we have too high a threshold here.
Can we add some language to that condition to make you more comfortable? So basically, you're asking that we go below the threshold for county requirements for noise?
Right.
Okay. Megan, any suggestions or...
I have a question for you, Ms. Knight. Is in construction of this building, or in planning for it and thinking about it, could the noise attenuation structure be planned so that it's kind of aesthetically pleasing around it? However you would do that, I don't know, I haven't thought much about it, but I'm just questioning, have you, let me go, let me, have you done anything like that where you've included the, sort of the noise attenuation in the building? I don't mean having the generator building...
There are exhaust and heat emission from the generators. The one thing I can say is, Megan, you've been up on site, these are fairly quiet. They're not the old rusty, you know, motor-type things. They're fairly quiet. So I believe between, you know, there is some exhaust as well as heat needing to escape, noise attenuation can be somewhat, has to be somewhat minimal. I would imagine the top would have to be open. It may be even wood, similar to what we're doing with the shelter, maybe a wood enclosure around it to absorb the noise coming off. I don't think that would be a problem, but it can't be enclosed.
No, no. My comment wasn't about enclosure. It was in thinking about it, if you would have an enclosure, have to build a wall or just whatever as part of your plan here.
Absolutely. The simplicity of this shelter, we had actually gone quite more ornate, was at the request of the school. This matches almost all of their buildings on site and kind of keeping with that. But we could do a, you know, I know wood fences do absorb quite a bit of noise, so if we could do a small wood enclosure around it so that it's absorbing the noise between when it's on and the neighbors.
Okay. If you were to do that, and I think the AR should see that, you would still have the chain link fence around it?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, fine. Okay. Commissioner Cooney, would you feel comfortable with adding a condition or expanding this one such that it, there would be this additional shielding, whatever form that would take, with some studies perhaps to show what the reduction in noise level might afford by the shielding, and return it to BAR for them to look at it aesthetically?
Well, as I read the condition, it says to P and D satisfaction, and normally, I'm comfortable with that, as long as staff understands the commission's feeling that we ought to be aiming to reduce the noise from 65 dB A to below, and in an aesthetically acceptable way. So perhaps we're talking about a further aesthetic review by BAR of the enclosure that the engineers come up with, and then I think staff would be comfortable with it, and the commission can delegate that responsibility. So I guess what I'm saying is, this is a little bit broad and nonspecific, but I'm comfortable that staff's discretion is broad. So we should be able to accomplish it within the language of this, as long as you understand what we're looking for.
Absolutely, and I'll work with you. Absolutely, and I'll work with staff to accomplish that goal.
Okay. Ms. Black?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, I think what we would recommend is just a pretty minor modification to Condition 19, to delete the phrase "to operate within this limit" and then to delete the phrase under "timing" as necessary to comply with this standard. And that way, it's clear that shielding is required and we understand what the commission's intent is.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, fine, okay. Any other, anything else, Ms. Knight, that you'd like to present?
Aye, nothing unless you have any other questions.
Okay, fine. Then I would just like to open public comment. If we have any speaker slips, nothing from the North County, then I'll open the public comment and then I will also close it. And then bring it back to the commission for any further questions of staff and finally deliberations. And I think this is yours and your district.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a football stadium, you know, there's a lot of noise there in that area. People in sports, there's a lot of screaming and yelling, hip-hip parades and so on. And this emergency generator is only for backup electrical purposes, it's not going to be on all the time. The stationary equipment, I mean, I've been next to big radar stations where you have caterpillar backup, and they're like 500 horsepower and you can barely hear them. This is a minor thing, probably under 20 horsepower or something like that, you know, it's going to be something small. It's not going to be very large, so the noise is going to be muted, one, two, and it's about at least 100 feet or 150 feet to the nearest house. And, I'm sorry, and I just don't think it's going to be a major problem. If you live next to a ball field, you're not going to have a problem. And that's all I have on that, Madam Chair. And I'm ready to make a motion when one of you are ready.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I have a question, I guess staff could help me out on this one. I know because of some issues in the Montecito area that the county is looking at a telecommunications policy. Could somebody from staff, could you address that? And do you see any potential conflict with where that policy might be going with this project? You know, I know the issues that have been raised in Montecito, are any of those issues, should we be looking at those today? Or do we wait for this new policy to be drawn up?
Ms. Black, Mr. Cazzoni, Ms. Lowry, anybody in response to that?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, I don't think you have a basis to wait for some subsequent action by the Board of Supervisors. And in fact, the Board did not direct us to look at buffers around schools, they looked at, they asked us to look at permit-level issues and noticing issues. So I don't think they're going to be addressing that issue in the future anyway.
Okay. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, perhaps before your commission further deliberates, we could make just one recommended change to the notice of exemption to clarify at the bottom of Page 2, the sentence that starts "therefore the project is minor in nature" and insert "therefore the project, including the storage building, is minor in nature and would not have the potential to create any significant environmental effects." Just to clarify that, we were looking at that as well.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
In terms of the environmental review, it would be helpful, I think, if Commissioner Valencia's motion includes the discussion at this hearing as a basis for determining the compliance with CEQA.
Okay. Ms. Brooks?
Yes, one thing I would like to look a little bit more carefully on is Condition 8, FCC compliance, because I do have, you know, concerns with this. As it's stated now, under, in Condition 8, in Section B, it says continued verification every five years. There would be a qualified professional, you know, to perform the RF field testing. I do have concerns, you know, with the radio frequency issue. Would there be any consideration of having that more frequent rather than five years, considering we are dealing with a school campus?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, I think the fact that this is an ordinance standard, combined with the fact that the facility is only expected to operate at less than 1% of the permitted level, probably doesn't support doing more frequent reviews of the RF limit. So I understand your concern, but I think, I think it's adequately covered.
Okay. I'd just like to make the comment that aesthetically, I think using these light standards is really a good way to go, particularly because the antennas are not very obtrusive. And you probably, once they're up there, you're not really, they're going to blend in, they're going to be painted to match, you won't really see them, the change in the style of the light pole is not going to really make that much difference. So I really think that it's a good use of existing infrastructure, if you will. And I do hope that the landscaping does get installed, because I think it will make a difference around the building and with the reconfiguration of the stairway, it'll certainly help in that area. So I think also that with the addition to that last condition of approval, that will be helpful to enclose, to surround, I guess is a better word, the generator. Commissioner Cooney?
Just to comment in response to Commissioner Valencia's observation about the noise of the generator, I do see a difference. I totally agree with him that schools in general and Rigetti High School is certainly no exception. It's full of noise on a regular basis, weekends, weeknights, when there are activities, bands' practice, you know, football teams out there all fall. There is all kinds of activity generating noise in that particular area. But I think the difference is that the residents of that area basically are aware that they're buying their home next to an active school campus and they accept that noise intrusion on their lives. It's a completely different noise than a machinery noise. And so I think what we're doing is we're permitting the applicant and the school for that matter to intrude on the enjoyment of the surrounding residential areas by adding this equipment. And we should do everything we can to minimize that intrusion. So I really do see a distinction between the types of noise.
Okay, if there are no other comments, Commissioner Valencia, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, with respect to the checking the RF every so often, the FCC depends a lot on the IEEE and IEEE meet monthly or quarterly. And these are the smartest electrical engineers in the nation that make up all these rules and continually verify whether RF propagation is extreme or not. And they check the wavelengths and the frequencies and so on. And they establish and help provide guidelines for newer bandwidths to be available for transmission and so on. So, I mean, there's a lot of attention to this, don't think that there isn't. It's continually monitored. And with respect to that, to the noise level, I agree with Commissioner Cooney that we should do everything we can to keep the noise down. The reason these antennas are going up is because there's a dead zone in the orchid area and they need to take care of that, you know. I drive on 246 many times, try to make a phone call, you can't make a phone call. There's dead zones all over this county. And when there's emergencies and there's a lot of accidents on 246, you can't make a call. So I'm glad that we're taking care of a dead zone. And with that, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, I mean, I'm sorry, I'd like to make the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of this staff report, including the CEQA findings, and that we determine that the project is exempt from pursuant to Sections 15302, 15303 of CEQA, and that we approve the project subject to the conditions as including Attachment C, as corrected and updated, and that we include the comments at this meeting in our minutes. Thank you. In the motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that. All right, Mr. Villalobos, can I have you call the roll, please?
Wait, could we just-
Sorry, I'm sorry, did you have some other-
I do, because I would like to-
Go ahead.
-just explain-
Okay.
-how I will be voting and why.
Okay.
I think, I'll go back, although it was explained to me about Condition 8, I do have concerns about, I guess it's the co-location possibilities of these, of the towers that I'm also concerned about. I find it ironic that many of the schools, well, they don't want the cell phones on, definitely during the school day. You have many elementary schools that are, you know, prohibiting, you know, the children carrying cell phones. There's just a lot of issues out there. And, you know, here we are putting, you know, a facility on the campus. And this is going to be one, I see this continuing for, you know, many, many years to come. I know there's some churches in my local community that have applications in for towers, local schools now. I know they are looking at some extra income that possibly these facilities, you know, will bring in and at a time when schools are looking for funding. They seem to be going in an unusual way here, this is, you know, as I read through this. I mean, we look at vegetation protection, we have species protection, you know, I think, you know, with Condition 8, you know, that's probably, they're looking at ensuring, you know, public protection. We have shielding proposed for the noise. Well, I don't know about, you know, having this particular project, you know, on a school campus. And that will be how I will vote, and that's the reason for my vote.
Okay. Are there any other comments before we move to the vote by the commissioner?
Madam Chair?
Okay.
About nine years ago, when the first applications came into us, people were carrying units about this large for telephones and the only thing you could do is talk to a few people. There were so many dead zones, it was unbelievable. Today, you get something about the size, this size, and you can take pictures, you can take video, you can transmit messages, you can do texting back and forth, you can Twitter yourself out. You know, it's unbelievable how much technology there is. It's going to increase. And what's going to happen in the future is that all these people, kids, will need these antennas because there will be a pin on everybody that will have, where are you? If people want to find their children, they'll be able to locate their children. It's just the technology's going to evolve, whether we like it or not, it's going to come. Many years ago, truck drivers would rent, take trucks and deliver something to a destination, but halfway through, they would unload the load and do separate loads to make extra money and then come back and get their trailer and take it to their destination. People were wondering, why does it take so long? Because these people were doing it. Now they can't because they put a GPS locator on there. And now things, it's for the good, it's not for the bad. And just whether you accept it in your own family, it's your own personal decision. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, if not, Mr. Villalobos.
Commissioner Brooks?
No.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
Okay, great, thank you. We're going to take a little five-minute break before we start our next item, which is number three. Read item number three, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a hearing at the request of the Office of Long Range Planning to review the list of capital projects contained in the 2010-2015 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program, CIP, and report to the Board of Supervisors as to their conformity with the general plan pursuant to Government Code 65401 and 65402.
Great, thank you. And welcome, Mr. Eadie, good to see you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Brown. Good morning, fellow commissioners. As Mr. Villalobos was kind enough to mention, we are here today just to discuss the county's current five-year CIP and their requirement for a year of commission to perform the necessary general plan consistency determination. As a bit of background, the county's capital improvement plan includes a variety of projects, most of which are to implement the plans that we've developed ourselves, such as community and facility plans. Projects that find themselves on the CIP meet certain characteristics. Generally, they're non-recurring, they have a relatively long service life, and they're generally budgeted for more than $100,000. The entire 2010 to 2015 CIP contains a total of 187 projects. However, only 20 of these are new as of this year. Approximately 70% of the total projects are at least partially funded, and the remaining projects may be appropriated funding in the future as the county deems appropriate. The CIP is developed in a basic three-stage process. So first, county departments submit projects which meet CIP criteria to the county CEO's office. Then the Budget and Research Division of the CEO's office prepares the draft five-year CIP. And this draft is then reviewed by the Capital Advisory Committee, which has representatives of various county departments who would be concerned with such projects and expenditure of capital. Finally, after the Capital Advisory Committee reviews the draft CIP, it is forwarded on to the Board where they conceptually review the CIP. And for this year, the Board has already conceptually reviewed and approved the 2010 to 15 CIP at its regular hearing on March 23, 2010. After the Board takes this action, they forward the CIP back to the Planning Commission for the acquired general plan consistency determination, which is the subject of our discussion today. The County Planning Commission pursuant to Government Code is the authority responsible for evaluating and determining whether or not the CIP is consistent with the county's comprehensive general plan. This consistency determination is required by state law specifically pursuant to Government Code Sections 65401 and 65402. The consistency determination is only applicable to the 20 new projects. The balance of the projects, which would be 167, has already undergone general plan consistency review during previous CIPs. So in basic explanation, projects, when they're completed, fall off the five-year CIP and we basically add a, you know, proportionately new amount of projects to the tail end and we always keep this running five-year tally of projects we expect to embark upon. Government Code Section 65401 requires the county to provide a programmatic level review of these major CIP projects. So this section is more, provide a general plan consistency that's based on more the general concept and the purpose of the CIP projects versus the actual detail of the project itself. Therefore, specific project-level planning and knowledge is not required to make the consistency determination with 65401. And as such, staff has reviewed all of the 20 new CIP projects and recommends that the PC find that all 20 projects are consistent with the county's general plan pursuant to Government Code 65401. A summary of this review is provided in your staff report as part of Attachment A. Moving on to 65402, this section of Government Code requires a bit more specificity. In other words, in order to make the general plan conformity determination, you need to be able to evaluate each project's proposed location, purpose, extent, intensity of development, other information such as that. And because of that, staff has reviewed the proposed CIP and at this point, time recommends that the Planning Commission only find 17 out of the 20 projects consistent with the general plan. This was provided in a summary as part, as Attachment B of your staff report. The remaining three projects, staff has determined that they lack sufficient planning and detail at this time in order to complete the necessary general plan determination consistency- consistency with six-five-four-oh-two specifically. This is primarily because these projects are in such early stages that we lack sufficient information to make that determination at this time. As a summary of these three projects, we'll start with the large animal holding facility. This would be a new facility intended to provide shelter for impounded large livestock that our existing animal shelters cannot accommodate. Examples would be horses, cows, goats, sheep. And this facility is more than likely to be located in the Santa Maria area, most likely on excess county land in the Foster Road area near the existing North County Animal Shelter that currently houses smaller animals like dogs and cats. However, since no specific site has been selected and no detailed plans for the facility have been proposed, we lack sufficient information at this time to complete the consistency determination. Moving on, we have another animal shelter, this time in Lompoc. The proposed CIP at this point in time would be to either significantly renovate the existing facility or to develop an entirely new facility. And at this point in time, the county has not taken the action to evaluate the existing facility to see if renovation is even feasible. So with so much yet to be determined on the project, again, it's unlikely that we can make a consistency determination at this juncture. Lastly, we have perhaps the biggest of the three projects, which is the county's solar energy supply concept. The general guidelines of this project would be to try and develop a 750-kilowatt solar power array. This array would be specifically intended to provide electricity to the county's municipal operations and therefore supply our own facility's power in a sustainable manner. This solar array would most likely be located on some piece of county-owned land, but at this point in time, the piece of land is yet to be chosen and the design of the solar array is yet to be embarked upon. And so again, we lack sufficient data at this time to make the six-five-four-oh-two determination. So finally, staff's recommendation would be that the Planning Commission review the list of new capital projects which have been added to the five-year capital improvement program for the fiscal years 2010 to 2015. That the commission consider the conformity of these projects with the general plan pursuant to Government Code Sections six-five-four-oh-one and six-five-four-oh-two. And that the commission report to the Board of Supervisors that, for the purposes of general, excuse me, Government Code Section six-five-four-oh-one, that new capital projects contained in the five-year capital improvement program as listed in Attachment A of the staff report conform to the county's general plan. Also, that the commission report to the board that for purposes of Government Code six-five-four-oh-two, that the new capital projects, those only being the 17 I mentioned, which are listed in Attachment B, conform to the county's general plan. And lastly, Office of Long Range Planning would forward the list of projects that may need future review under Government Code six-five-four-oh-two, so those are the three remaining projects that I outlined, back to the county departments responsible for them so that they're aware that those will need consistency determination in the future. That concludes staff presentation. We are here to answer any questions, and we also have Mr. Morgantini from the CEO's office. He is the project manager for the entire CIP, so he can answer additional questions if we see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll open it up for commission questions. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the construction of a 750-kilowatt solar panel power array, I mean, what's the total power going to be generated from there in probably megawatts?
Chairwoman Brown and Commissioner Valencia, I think at this point in time, that project is really of a conceptual nature and more of, I don't know, philosophical would be the right word, but right now, the county is developing its climate action strategy. There are certain requirements that we plan to meet pursuant to AB 32 and SB 375, and that is in part going to require that we, as a municipal operator, reduce our own greenhouse gas emissions. And that's one of the first ways that we'll try and do it, which is to limit the greenhouse gases associated with our own facility operation.
Are there several, I noticed that the site hasn't been selected. Are there several that you're looking in which areas? Or is that confidential information?
Chairwoman Brown and Commissioner Valencia, I'll let Mr. Morgantini shed any extra light on that he may have, but at this point in time, you know, I don't know that the county is pursuing any specific sites.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning and welcome, Madam Chair, Commissioner Valencia. Yes, that is all still in the conceptual, sites are being identified, but as we proceed forward from the county perspective, there'll be more details as they are developed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Cooney?
Well, Madam Chair, I put question marks next to quite a few of the information technology items listed in Exhibits A and B. Maybe Mr. Morgantini or someone else from staff can just talk about generally these various suggested entries on page six of our staff report. Data for decision-making, microwave tower replacement, data communications, virtual desktop, and finally enterprise geographic information systems. Some of these projects have probably been in the works for some time, but I'm just not familiar with what they are and what they'll do.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Cooney, yes. There was a change in the accounting process from the Government Accounting Standards Board that went into effect early this fiscal year. And so projects that in the past, particularly the technology, software, computer-related, had not been included, and we, there was an update from the Auditor and Controllers Office on the policy, and we included those in there. Some were included that did not have to be. We will be removing data for decision-making and the GIS program from future capital improvement projects because they fall outside those guidelines. It was new guidelines that were issued, and this is the first time the CIP and the Advisory Committee had seen them, so we erred on the side of caution and included the projects that we may not have necessarily needed to. And that's why some of those that are in there that have not, you have not seen those in the past, it's been a change in our need to account for them.
What is the virtual desktop, just in layman's terms?
I've got Sally Nagy, the IT Department Director, is here to probably give you a better technical review of that than I could.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Sally Nagy, I'm the Chief Information Officer. And the good news is, I was given a heads-up that there might be question about why IT projects are in the CIP. Virtual desktop infrastructure is a technology that allows us to not have to keep buying new PCs on such a regular basis. Instead of having to upgrade your PCs, what we do is we use server technology to then deliver what you see on your PC to your monitor so that we can get many more years' life out of a piece of equipment than we do today. This is relatively new technology, and so what we have to do is we have to build the infrastructure based on servers, the hardware and the software, that allows us to implement that technology.
All right, and while we're on a roll.
Okay.
The geographic information systems, is that one that's going to fall off the capital improvement?
Yes, we put what we call a survey-grade network in there, and that will fall off because it was, it's not really meant to be a capital program, it's really software development.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Pardon me.
Go ahead.
Is this kind of like putting recaps on a car?
Yes, actually, it is.
Ms. Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Brown. I guess, you know, while we're on the information technology, I was interested to see, you know, how many items in this IT area were added to the list. And does this mean that each of these is over, estimated to be over $100,000? Is that what?
Yes, these are all substantially more than $100,000. Most of these are part of our core infrastructure. We have the microwave towers, which is literally a bricks-and-mortar project to replace aging structures. We have the network modernization, which is the basic foundation of the county's voice and data network, and that's a combination of hardware that has to be replaced. There's some HVAC that we have in the data center that I believe is in the list. So these are all significant projects.
Okay. Yesterday, I was online and I was looking at the Board of Supervisors' agenda, and after I had just reviewed this, and then I noticed the Treasury Tax Department had an item on the agenda yesterday that had to do with software and maintenance. So are these projects similar to, you know, why would that particular software maintenance go, you know, come from this department versus, you know, be on this list of capital improvement projects?
The Treasurer's Software Project is a significant project. It's a couple million dollars when they get to that point to replace the county's existing tax, property tax system. And so that's being managed out of the Treasurer's Office, we're certainly working closely together. But it would not be a project that the IT Department would submit.
Ms. Nagy, I have a question on Project 195, which is the data communications network modernization, and it's described, or part of it's described, as examining the network routing schema and network security configurations and implementing power over Ethernet switches. I'm just, I'm having a hard time with this, seeing how it should belong here within these programs. I realize you're taking out some of them, but can you just explain how this fits in with what we're looking at today?
We capitalize these projects because of the magnitude, okay? We collect depreciation for these items, and basically, the county's network does not run, it's infrastructure, much like HVAC is. And so that's why we're instructed to put them in the capital improvement plan. I think in the existing plan, we've just had one project that completed this year, and that was something we called the North County Internet Connectivity. And that was because it was a significant component on making the county's data network work. This is the same thing. This affects pretty much everything the county does with computing, and it's significant enough we want it on the board's radar screen.
But it's more of a software applicat, no?
The network modernization is actually mostly hardware. There's software upgrades involved in it, but it's mostly hardware replacement.
Network, so network routing schema.
That part is, that part is the software.
And the network security configurations is a software.
It's hardware and software.
Wow.
It is hardware and software.
And power over Ethernet switches are hardware.
Yes.
Interesting.
But all of these are really a combination of hardware and software. Without upgrading the hardware, you can't upgrade the software. And the, if you do upgrade the hardware, then you have to put new software on it.
Well, and I guess without the software, what's the point of the hardware? I mean, you, I get that, it just is, I guess we haven't seen this before, so it's sort of our ability to see how it fits in, okay. Any other questions by commissioners on any of the items?
Just since you're a technical, just curious, is it beyond the four-bit byte to a new technology, or is it still a four-bit byte?
Well, we're using 64 bits in a lot of what we're doing these days. I can't speak how many bytes are actually in what we're doing in the network, that would be for the technicians, but it's pretty sophisticated stuff that we're doing these days. I'm sorry, if you'd like that, I can, I can forward it to one.
No, it's just curiosity, you know, years ago, when it started, it was a three-bit byte, then went to a four-bit byte, and now what you're doing is you're double, using double precision or something like that.
The stuff keeps changing and cramming more and more into a smaller space, and so that was what you would see there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I have questions for Mr. Edie. Looking at the attachments, the first attachment is basically about initiation, the second attachment is roughly about analysis, and the third attachment is about items that may be reviewed. And then looking at number 162, which is the Veterans Memorial, it's not in either one of those lists, so where is it in the queue?
Chairwoman Brown and Commissioner Valencia, let me clarify, the three attachments, actually, the first attachment is strictly related to Government Code Section six-five-four-oh-one. So we have all 20 new projects are on that because there is a lower threshold for determining consistency with the general plan, and at this point in time, we can say all 20 projects are consistent. Attachment B strictly applies to six-five-four-oh-two. Again, that's the Government Code section that deals with project-specific analysis. So that's where we had to split those 20 projects out into the 17 that we can make the determination on today, and the three which we're going to have to wait in the future. Now, the Veterans Memorial Project, I believe you're referring to, it's not one of the 20 new projects, therefore, its consistency determination was already done under a previous CIP, and that's why you don't see it in the attachments today, because we're only dealing with the 20 new projects.
Okay, and then looking at the source of funds, it says Carry Forward 307, so that means you have $307,000 there now?
Chairwoman Brown and Commissioner Valencia, I'd have to defer it either Mr. Morgantini or somebody from the Treasurer's Office to verify exactly what funds. Basically, the CIP just keeps a running list of the projects that we intend to realistically develop within the next five years, but the funding for each individual project is actually decided at the budget time with the rest of the county's budget.
Mr. Morgantini, there's, on the Carry Forward, there's CB, CDBG Funds 307, and Lompoc Veterans Memorial, I guess it's Fund 255, for a total of 506. Is that 562,000 that's available now for that work?
Yes, based on the numbers there, the Lompoc Veterans Memorial Building, that's the foundation.
Oh, that's what that means, foundation.
Yes, those are funds that the department, which is, this is under, being managed under General Services, are anticipating carryover from this fiscal year into next fiscal year to be available for that project.
Be available, and then the 807 is what you're hoping to get from a request to the federal program, federal?
Yes, that's correct.
And is there any response to that yet?
I am not aware of any update on that at this point.
Do you make that application, or does the district office make that?
That is under, through the project team, which is through General Services, and I'm not sure if General Services is actually making that, if the foundation is making that, or if it's coming through the fourth district office.
But the application is in for that now?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Morgantini, while you're up there, I just have a question. This is really a lovely document, and I see that Commissioner Valencia has colored pictures in his, and I only have black and white, but that's okay. It's really a great document with a lot of good information. Is there, does the public ever ask for this? Do you ever send many of these out, or what?
We, we do put them available at various county offices. Every department gets them. Individuals that have an interest in this are able to access it. We put it online, and we have extra copies available for libraries if they need them.
Do you give them to the libraries?
If, some of the libraries ask for them, some of them don't. This year, due to some of the budget restraints, we did cut back on the number of copies we made. We also cut back on the number of color copies we made, so that's why some of the black and white ones are out there. And then, you know, they're available, I have a few extra copies. This year, we did put a number of them, or actually, for the first time, made compact discs and have those available, substantially cheaper, easier to distribute, and allows people to index so they can go in and look by department or project and get that information.
Is this the only forum in which the public can sort of comment, provide official comment on these projects? I realize when they go to before the board, there's that opportunity as well, but is the?
For the book itself, yes. They, when it comes before the Board of Supervisors, individual projects, the public has a chance to comment on. When the whole project book is- When the whole project book is deliberated on by the Board of Supervisors--
As well.
They can also provide input to our office. I'm not sure how that's been done in the past. This is the first year I've been the project manager. But we do keep these on file and do our best to respond as necessary.
And do you get many public comments? Other than, say, individual projects going before the board and, but sort of--
We do get, depending on the project and the location, a lot of times the, the comments are directed to the individual departments that are, are listed in here. And they, and each project has a project manager. Project manager for that, for the, the particular department may have a number of them. And they are, they're available to answer those questions also.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Valencia?
Yes, Madam Chair. And of this money in there, there isn't any information here that tells you whether next year during 2010 and 2011, there's going to be any work done? That has nothing to do with it?
There, the, the, and the departments anticipate, and that's what you'll see in the proposed project, projected requirements for like years two, three, and beyond. And it's all based on when the, the department puts the information into the system and when we develop this. As budgets change, as decisions are made, those funding amounts can shift and can be made available sooner or later. It just depends upon, you know, the, the point in time.
It's a board decision of when you do that expenditure and when you make that application to--
Yes, the, the board is ultimately responsible for making the decisions.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
I just have one question in thinking about the large animal holding facility. Certainly, building infrastructure and other kinds of things are sometimes more expensive than just doing what they do now. I guess, I'm not sure exactly where these animals go, or if volunteers, volunteer organizations take them. And I guess that's probably one of the reasons that you've had some difficulty in doing any further analysis. But how, how did this originate? Just by the fact that there was a need from the fires, or when they get animals and compound them?
The Public Health Department Animal Services identified the need. They go through the process of submitting it through the CIP process, putting it into the database with all the appropriate information and funding sources. And then it's reviewed and makes it into the book and then, you know, for further review by the Board of Supervisors, and if it's a new project by the planning--
Does some of these projects, is it possible they ultimately drop out of the process? Have you ever seen that?
It is possible. As departments reassess their, their future needs, funding changes, operations change, departments may decide to add something, change it, or, or remove it.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Brooks, you had a question or comment?
I guess more of a comment. I don't know if anybody would want to deal with this. I remember getting my copy of this last year, my first year on the commission. I think, oh, this is wonderful. You know, I like this one, I like that one. I know now, I have a more realistic view of the booklet and what happens to the projects in here. You know, I'm looking just third district. You know, there's the Soul Bang Library Improvement is listed there. There's something for the San Inez Airport. I know the Little League Field out in Vanderburg Village has been, you know, in the queue for quite a long time. I guess that was my concern then when we got the list and the staff report, you know, with all the IT items in here. Does that mean that some of these, let's say, what I consider like, you know, public work type projects, are they in competition, you know, for funding, you know, with these IT issues? Because it seems to me that, you know, the county has an, like, an IT strategic plan and is the funding, you know, again, is it competing with the fact that, you know, maybe our roads might be repaved this year? Will the information technology, that seems so important, but some of these other items, you know, for the communities are very important too. So, you know, what's the nexus there that I'm missing maybe?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks, it depends upon the funding sources. A lot of the IT projects are internal service funds. A lot of the other projects have some general fund component or a matching fund component. So it, it, the answer is yes and no. It depends upon the project and the funding source. A lot of the IT projects, like I said, have internal service funds. So those are separate, and those funds are restricted onto where they can be spent. Some of the other projects, you know, like some of the roads, some of those funds that they get in are, are Measure A, Measure D, and those are restricted. So it, it, it depends on the project and, and the funding source. And some of them do compete with, with others. And that's part of this process with the Board of Supervisors, is to prioritize and, and see where, where money is and what money is available to, to try to go forward with projects.
Okay. Mr. Eady, do you have any concluding comments or responses to our comments or questions?
Chairwoman Brown, no, I do not. But if you need a reiteration of the motion, I can provide it or--
Okay, I'm going to get there in just a second. I see Mr. Johnson's joined us. Do you have any concluding thoughts?
Chairwoman Brown, my only thought would be that, of course, this goes to, back to the board. So there'll be a further opportunity for the public to, to hear about this. And one comment I would, would make is that for Commissioner Brooks, in the past, the Los Alamos Community Plan, for example, had a capital improvement program that was an appendix to the CI, to the community plan. It was this odd location that this stuff was stored and it had gotten, essentially forgot about. So one of the things that we did this last year with the update of that plan is reintegrate a lot of those projects back into the CIP. So last year, I think you saw some of those projects reintroduced to the CIP. But that's part of our job, is we update the community plans, the general plans, to work with our colleagues in Public Works and make sure those projects get in there. Of course, they compete with other projects, but nonetheless, it's a, you know, consolidated way to, to track them and look at them, at them from that perspective.
Okay, thank you. Therefore, Commissioner Valencia, would you like to make the motion? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The planning commission reviewed the list of capital projects added to the five-year capital improvement program, CIP for 2010 to 2015, Attachment A. And the planning commission considered the conformity of these projects with the general plan pursuant to Government Code GC Section 65401 and 65402. And now the, and now the planning commission would like to report to the Board of Supervisors that for the purposes of GC Section 65401, the new capital projects contained in the five-year capital program listed in Attachment A conform to the general plan. And B, that for purposes of general code Section 65402, the new capital projects listed in Attachment B conform to the general plan. And four, we request that the Office of the Long Range Planning forward the list of the projects that may need future review under Gen, General Code Section 65402, Attachment C to the affected county departments.
Great, thank you. Is there a second to that?
I'll second, but I, I just want to modify or ask Commissioner Valencia to modify the reference to the general code being the government code. It just says GC in our staff report, but that, that is the appropriate code.
So, so be.
Okay, great. Any further comment? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, there you have Mr. Eady. And we, our last agenda item is number four. We are going to be looking at the Plan Santa Barbara General Plan Update. And I understand that staff from the City of Santa Barbara won't be here till about eleven thirty. So we're going to take a break until eleven thirty, about eleven thirty. So we'll see you back at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing at the request of the Office of Long Range Planning to present a briefing on the City of Santa Barbara's Plan Santa Barbara General Plan Update and draft program environmental impact report.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Johnson, welcome. And I'm not sure who's giving the presentation, but if you'd like to start?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I just want to introduce the team that's going to be presenting today and then give you a brief background. We have Peter Imhoff, who's a supervising planner in long range planning. We have Susan Curtis. And then joining us this morning from the City of Santa Barbara, we have Mr. John Ledbetter, who's been working on the team, I think, leading the team on Plan Santa Barbara. Of course, as part of our work program that we've brought to the commission, if you recall, part of one of the items that we take care of every year is what it, under the required services, is the portion dedicated to responsible agency review. So our office works with many departments on commenting on documents in cities and by special districts and look at general plan consistency and other issues of regional significance. And in today's item, given that there are some active planning efforts underway in the South Coast that are directly related to Plan Santa Barbara, we thought it was important to bring this item forward for your briefing. As I mentioned, we will be submitting formal comments to the City of Santa Barbara. Those comments are due by the seventeenth of this month. So what we're looking for today from the commission is, are there any issues that you see based upon the, you know, somewhat limited information that we are providing to you that staff needs to take a look at? Are there any, any explicit comments that you want us to include with respect to our formal comments to the, to the city? And so our, our presentation today is going to be a, a fairly conceptual presentation with focus on the areas that we think are most relevant to the county's jurisdiction, Mission Canyon, the Eastern Gleta Valley, and Montecito. I would note that we did brief the Montecito Planning Commission last week. We, we did receive some feedback. We were talking with one of the commissioners about working to strengthen that, their feedback. But nonetheless, if there's any areas that you feel we should focus on in our analysis, we would appreciate that direction today.
Great, thank you. Mr. Imhoff?
So, good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners. As Mr. Johnson mentioned, on March eighteenth, the City of Santa Barbara released its draft DIR for Plan Santa Barbara, which is a comprehensive update of its general plan and plans out twenty years to a 2030 planning horizon. Also, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, the purpose of our presentation today is principally to brief the planning commission on the core components of Plan Santa Barbara and summarize the conclusions of the draft DIR, especially as they may affect the unincorporated county. So we'd also like to hear comments from the commission so that we can include them in the county's formal comment letter to the city on the draft DIR. Our report will give a, a general overview of the plan and then focus more specifically on the plan on the areas of incorporated county adjacent to the city, most affected by the plan. And similarly, we'll give a general overview of the draft DIR and then focus on areas of interest to the county. So the, the Santa Barbara City Council has identified several guiding goals for the general plan, which include, as you can see, living within resources, environmentally sustainable policies, ensuring affordable housing opportunities, safe and convenient transportation, ensuring a strong economy, advancing regional thinking, maintaining Santa Barbara's unique character and desirability, providing adequate services and facilities, and encouraging public involvement and participation. Some of the highlights briefly, Plan Santa Barbara would completely revamp the general plan, beginning with an updated land use map, housing, and land use elements. The plan then also establishes a framework for updates to the remaining general plan elements. And as we'll see in more detail in a moment, the plan creates a new system of land use designations, which state both maximum and minimum allowable densities. To encourage smaller affordable units, Plan Santa Barbara also proposes an average residential density program that creates average floor area requirements for new residential development. In new residential developments, this program would ensure that new units did not exceed specified average sizes. Overall, Plan Santa Barbara projects an additional 2,795 dwelling units and two million square feet of non-residential growth within the plan horizon, which is similar, almost identical to projected growth under the current city plan. This next slide breaks out the no project alternative in comparison to the Plan Santa Barbara in a little bit more detail. You can see the upper row shows non-residential growth. Under the no project alternative, under the existing plan, between the, the city's own area and its sphere of influence, there's a total potential of some 2.4 million square feet of non-residential development that's possible. Within the planning horizon out to 2030, the total non-residential floor area would actually decline slightly to 2178, 2,178,000 square feet. The plan also looks at an extended range. It doesn't give a, the draft DIR does not give a project level of review to the extended range, but the, the plan acknowledges that with, out to 2050, beyond the plan horizon, given the potential theoretical build-out under the plan, there could be a potential for up to 3.2 million square feet of non-residential growth. Then looking at residential growth, under the no project alternative, as you saw previously, within the city, some 2,795 new dwelling units are possible. That number is the same under Plan Santa Barbara. Looking at the extended range out to 2050, under the theoretical build-out under the new plan, as many as 8,000 dwelling units could be built in the city and eight, almost 9,000 within the, the city and the sphere of influence together. So as I mentioned, the plan contains a, an average residential density program. The production of more affordable housing is a high priority for the city, and Plan Santa Barbara includes this program in an effort to target smaller units adjacent to transit and in close walking and biking distance to commercial areas. The current density maximums for multifamily zoning districts is typically 25 dwelling units per acre in the R3 and R4 zones now. Proposed densities for multifamily zoning districts would become 15 to 25 dwelling units per acre for medium-high residential classifications, and 27 to 34 dwelling units per acre for high residential, with a density based on an average unit size of 1,000 square feet. The program requires that new residential development meet an average target unit size depending on the density. So larger unit sizes are permitted within each density category, although a corresponding number of smaller units are then required in order to achieve the average floor area.
So I think one of the important points for the commission to understand is that there is this new minimum density, and the density obviously can increase as unit sizes get smaller. So this table just really illustrates that in, in a way that promotes, from the city's perspective and from studies that they've done, the relationship between unit size and affordability.
Mr. Johnson, just on that point, if, Mr. Imhoff, you go back to the last slide, because I found something interesting. You said that the no project, you'd have 3198 dwelling units, and with the Plan Santa Barbara, you'd have the same number of units. How is that possible? I don't understand that. It seems like you might get more from--
Madam Chair, this is something which perhaps a principal planner, John Ledbetter, can address in more detail. But my understanding is that the, the projection is based on an extrapolated historic rate. So the, the development rate under the existing plan would be, is assumed to be similar or identical to that under the new plan. And on that basis, the, the build-out numbers are the same.
Madam Chair, Mr. Imhoff is correct. The numbers are the same, they're based on historical trends. Now, the main difference, of course, is that we're looking to have these smaller, more affordable units targeted closer to the core, the downtown, along the commercial corridors, as opposed to what we have today, where we're seeing a lot of these larger luxury units spread out more. So even though the number would be the same, they would be smaller, more targeted, and affordable.
Well, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I guess I just find it difficult because as you've indicated that you have these larger units. And if nothing were to change, you'd still probably continue to have larger units, but under Plan Santa Barbara, you're going to encourage the smaller, so I would think you'd get more. But anyway, move on. Thank you.
So I also want to mention, in connection with the average residential density program, that development review standards, including design review considerations, would apply and determine building envelope and allowable densities. So those remain the same or are enhanced under the new plan. And the smaller the average size unit, the greater the density up to the maximum of either 24 or 34 dwelling units per acre, depending on the new land use designation. So this next slide shows the existing general plan land use map. This is also in Attachment B in your briefing packet. Plan Santa Barbara proposes adoption of a new land use map, as I mentioned, that includes new land use designations for various zones, as well as minor cleanup changes to resolve conflicting zones or land use designation boundaries within the current plan. So under the current plan, the general land use pattern, you can see the darker colors along the State Street corridor and moving out from there represent higher densities. And those densities fall off as you move outward from the State Street backbone. I'd also note that the city's jurisdiction also includes the Santa Barbara Airport, which all-- which I'll address a little bit more. So, this slide from Plan Santa Barbara shows the principal change areas that have been identified by the city. The numbered areas show proposed changes in land use designations and zoning. Attachment G in your briefing packet provides a copy of this map, and Attachment H provides the numbered list of the changes. The updated general plan map creates more explicit mixed-use designations to better define land use transitions, with modestly higher densities in the center of the city and along selected commercial locations. Plan Santa Barbara would create a mixed-use area around that same State Street backbone and promote infill within the area. So, what's new under this plan? There is an introduction of new land use designations with the increased densities. In particular, the residential and commercial high-density land use designations bump up total maximum density to 34 dwelling units per acre from the current limit of about 25, and that's seen in dark red throughout the map. Many of these areas are currently designated general commerce along State Street, which allow for a mix of commercial and residential development up to that lesser 25 dwelling units per acre. These areas have been identified where higher intensity development may be appropriate to encourage greater affordability and less automobile dependence. Things that are similar, but essentially repackaged, the commercial medium-high density land use designation maintains a maximum density of about 25 dwelling units per acre, which is seen in the slightly, it's more of a pink color. For example, Coast Village Road, that does not change in terms of the overall allowable With respect to the airport, along Fairview, you'll notice under the existing plan, there are areas that are zoned general commerce and industrial. Under the new plan, the designation would change from general commerce and industrial in those areas to an airport land use designation. It is, was not entirely clear to county planning staff, and maybe we'll get Mr. Ledbetter's input on exactly what uses that would now allow. This figure shows potential growth locations under the new plan. This is from Figure 8.1 in the draft DIR. The areas in blue highlight the potential future growth locations. New development would be focused toward commercial and multifamily zones with approximately 459 acres identified as potential future growth locations, which are typically sites with older single-story buildings or larger surface parking lots that are underutilized now. The plan identifies that the majority of the future growth would occur within a mobility-oriented development area that is established by the plan. The MODA, as it's known, is not a precisely defined physical area, but rather a generally applicable set of planning principles that applies to walkable development. So, the principles encourage location in higher-density housing areas adjacent to public transportation and within easy walking and biking distance to commercial services, parks, and open space. So, this figure also shows the Plan Santa Barbara spheres of, sphere of influence boundaries. They would not change under Plan Santa Barbara. There are no proposed changes in land use designations or zoning for the sphere areas. Plan Santa Barbara, future growth locations identified in the previous slides also included the unincorporated areas within the city's sphere at the Upper State Street, the northside, Upper Lacumbra Road area, and Los Pocitos Valley. Eventual annexation could result in up to 403 residential units and 178,000 square feet of non-residential development by 2030. Unincorporated areas considered in Plan Santa Barbara under sphere of influence for potential build-out also include, more specifically, 36 single-family dwelling units and 6,000 square feet in the Los Pocitos Valley, 129 single-family units within the Mission Canyon Community Plan area, and 53 single-family units and 23,900 square feet of non-residential development on the Upper State Street, Northside Lacumbra Road areas.
Mr. Imhoff, would you just repeat those figures for Mission Canyon?
Sure. For Mission Canyon, were Mission Canyon to be annexed eventually, there would be a potential for an additional 129 single-family units within the Mission Canyon Community Plan area.
Mr. Johnson.
And Commissioner Brown, those numbers comport with the data that we're looking at for purposes of preparing the current DIR for the Mission Canyon Community Plan, so we've double-checked those numbers.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So, the draft DIR identifies a range of different impacts. Attachment H in your briefing packet contains a summary of the environmental impacts and mitigation measures from the draft DIR. In particular, the draft DIR identifies Class 1 impacts in the areas of transportation and global climate change. While required and recommended, mitigation measures will reduce environmental impacts, but will not reduce them below the threshold of significance, so they would remain Class 1. With respect to transportation, the draft DIR indicates that traffic is expected to increase gradually over the next 20 years. Regional and city growth to 2030 could increase traffic volumes by an average of 16 percent, with traffic on local city streets projected to increase by 20 percent. For areas within the city's jurisdiction that the traffic study addresses, increases in traffic volumes could affect operation of the city's streets and intersections with congestion that could incrementally increase at 52 key intersections citywide. Traffic growth is projected to be focused on the city's arterial system, especially at approaches to interchanges with Highway 101 and key local streets such as Upper State Street. The traffic model encompasses the City of Santa Barbara and the city's areas of sphere of influence, but does not extend to areas of the unincorporated county outside that. So, more specifically still, the draft DIR identified the following Class 1 traffic impacts in areas adjacent to the county. These impacts would remain Class 1, significant with mitigation. In the Los Pocitos area, at Los Pocitos Road and Modoc Road, a Class 1 impact is identified at Los Pocitos Road and US Highway 101, similarly a Class 1 impact. And then, Upper State Street, Hitchcock Way and State Street, Hope Avenue and US Highway 101, both Class 1 impacts. And in Montecito, Olive Mill Road and Coast Village Road had Class 1 impacts. Various mitigation measures are proposed to address these. General measures including an intersection master plan, a friction-reducing program for city streets, and traffic demand management policies, which would expand the existing TDM program, would all apply. At certain intersections, specific physical mitigations are proposed, for example, at Los Pocitos and Cliff Drive, which is actually a Class 2 impact, a traffic signal around about is proposed, and similarly, at Olive Mill Road and Coast Village Road, a traffic signal around about is proposed. So, Class 2 impacts have then also been identified for various roadway corridors throughout the city. Another area of Class 1 impacts, global climate change. The draft DIR acknowledges that potential future development under the plan would incrementally contribute to regional increase in GHG emissions associated with energy consumption, and the draft DIR indicates that greenhouse gas emissions from transportation fuel and buildings would result in Class 1 impacts. Climate change effects on the city are discussed in various sections of the draft DIR in relation to water supply, flooding of creeks and watersheds, sea level rise, wildfires, public health, energy demand, economy, and biological resources. Mitigation measures proposed in the draft DIR include reductions in traffic demand through policies and programs that encourage neighborhood stores, increased downtown housing occupied by downtown workers, expanded transportation demand management programs, enhanced bicycle and pedestrian access and infrastructure, and improving housing availability, parking management, and transit services. In addition to Class 1 impacts, the draft DIR identifies Class 2 impacts in a range of areas and proposes mitigation with respect to air quality. For example, mitigation measures include an interim 250-foot setback from Highway 101 for new residential areas until state regulations are implemented and risks are reduced. Biological resources mitigation measures include further protections for key upland habitat and corridors, creek channel naturalization, drainage restoration, riparian habitat restoration, and a new creek setback standard. Geologic conditions mitigations include updated bluff-retreat review guidelines and shoreline management plan. Hazards mitigations include agency coordination to establish additional collection facilities and capacity. Heritage resources mitigations include protection of historic landmarks during adjacent construction activities, modified density and design policies for landmark and historic districts. Hydrology and water quality proposed mitigations include adaptive management for sea level rise. Noise mitigations include freeway monitoring for noise levels and installation of reduction measures such as new barriers and vegetation. Open space and visual resources mitigation measures include protection of key open space areas, establishing additional funding mechanisms, coordinating management with citizen groups, owners, and educational institutions, and coordinating regional open space. Public utilities, solid waste mitigations include coordinating with agencies to reduce long-term waste production and increase diversion of solid waste from landfill disposal. Transportation, we previously discussed.
Mr. Imhoff, you mentioned that there's a policy about coordinating regional open space. Can you elaborate on that?
I would probably defer to Mr. Ledbetter.
Fine. Good. Thank you.
On that mitigation measure, we can pull that up.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. If you'd like.
Okay. I'm almost done. So, I'll just, I'll push through here to the end. On the draft DIR alternatives, I just wanted to showcase, the alternatives considered by the plan include the no-project alternative and existing policies alternative, where you saw the growth would be virtually identical to what's proposed under the plan, a lower growth alternative, which would reduce density in housing units as well as non-residential development within the plan horizon, and then an additional housing alternative, which would increase overall development, both residential and non-residential. So, the, this timeline shows you the public participation schedule and city planning commission and city council process for the plan and for the draft DIR. The county provided comments on the notice of preparation to the draft DIR in February of 2009, and our office is now coordinating the county-wide departmental comments on the draft DIR for submittal to the city by May 17th. On June 22nd and 23rd, there'll be a joint city council and planning commission meeting at which staff hopes to receive comments on the direction of the plan, and then it's anticipated that the final plan documents would be adopted sometime in the fall of this year, with Coastal Commission certification and certification by State HCD to follow. So, to conclude, we ask that you receive this report and provide us with any comments to incorporate into our written comments to the city, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, Mr. Ledbetter's on hand to help us if we can't answer them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brooks.
May I begin anywhere?
Sure.
I'm looking at the DIR, what was this? On page 10, they talk about water supply. As I read through this, I keep coming back to water, water, water. And perhaps, I'm concerned, as I live in the 3rd district, we have the San Ynez River. You know, have there been any changes in the analysis of water supply, you know, since you began this process? I'm thinking in terms of the D-SAL plant. I know, maybe you could update me on how that's going to be incorporated, you know, into the water supply, and the whole idea of, you know, state water entitlements, even this year, you know, where we've had a fairly decent rain. I believe our, you know, entitlements are about 15 percent. So, maybe just a quick review on the water supply issue. Appreciate it.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks, as you may or may not know, the City of Santa Barbara, since the last big drought, has really diversified our portfolio of water resources, to include, of course, the D-SAL plant and state water. We have wells, we have the, Lake Kachuma, and a couple of other sources as well. Our Public Works Department Water Resources has done extensive studies. Every year, they update the water supply monitoring, the plan that they do, and for this particular effort, they went and looked, they updated all the different sources of water in terms of availability and probability. It's quite complicated, and I don't claim to be an expert at all in terms of how they develop these averages and how they look at the droughts and how they play out with average daily use and projected usage. I do know, though, however, the conclusion is that we do have sufficient capacity, even with a very conservative estimate of what we might receive from state water. As everybody knows, that's very questionable as to, you know, how dependable that is. And as far as the D-SAL plant, it's, you know, again, you may already know this, it's currently decommissioned, and it would be quite costly for us to bring it back online, although that is a distinct possibility. We have included that as part of our analysis in terms of available water supply, but it's strictly under extreme conditions, drought conditions, that something like that would be activated, and it's not considered part of the amount of supply that would be necessary over the next 20 years to meet the projected growth of Plan Santa Barbara. Again, as I said, I'm not really a water resource expert, but that kind of hopefully answers your questions.
I have a bunch of questions, so I'm going to launch right in. Just curiosity about your creek setback standards. What are you going to be increasing them to? I realize it doesn't affect county, but I'm interested. Living in urban areas, it's kind of nice to know what...
Yeah. Creek setback standards have generated quite a bit of controversy in the city. The last time we looked at doing that, I believe it was about five or six years ago, and we're not proposing any specific standards beyond what all the regulatory agencies already require, such as fish and game or Coastal Commission, Army Corps, that sort of thing. But we are, that's an implementation measure that we would renew that process to look at what would be the appropriate standards.
I, one of the bullets that Mr. Imhoff had up there was to advance regional thinking, collaboration, and solutions. What are going to be the implementation measures to do that?
Well, I think, as Mr. Imhoff noted, really, the whole framework of this update is to create a more sustainable community, and what that means for us as a, as a player in the region, if you will, is to do things like reduce our greenhouse gas emission, reduce our, the number of long-distance commuters, to promote more affordable housing, to look at how we can promote more infill development and not, not force the hand of our sister jurisdictions to develop, to do greenfield development. So, these are all really key principles to the whole framework of this plan, is advancing more regional thinking and more regional solutions. And so, that really tears down into all of the different elements in terms of how we are looking to approach our land use, circulation, transportation, and specifically, things like open space and looking at your question of, you know, how would we do that?
How would you do that?
Expanding the San Marcos Foothills Preserve by citing and clustering new development south of the preserve. I mean, I'm just, again, reading these mitigation measures directly out of the DIR. Consider potential options to expand the preserve northward during any future proposed subdivisions, et cetera. Coordinating with the county and private landowners to restore foothills and other lands degraded by past inappropriate grading or agricultural activities. Providing linked open space and trail corridors through incorporated and unincorporated areas of Los Pocitos Valley and eastern Hope Ranch. So, those are some of the specifics we would be doing.
In times past, there's often been said by the community that the City of Santa Barbara has exacerbated the jobs-housing imbalance, and I'm sure that's not, I'm sure that's something that you've heard before, by the number of jobs that they are in the city with people having to commute to Santa Maria and the outlying areas. And I'm just wondering, with the huge amount of commercial square footage you're anticipating, 2 million, along with your already housing imbalance, is that going to be, or the housing that's being proposed, is that going to bring it into balance, or is that something that's never going to happen with what's being contemplated here?
Chair Brown, actually, I would like to hearken back to one of the objectives of the plan itself, and I think that's something Mr. Imhoff didn't cover, and really, the heart of our land use element is our growth management plan. We've had, we... We've had, we commonly refer to it as Mejeree, we've had this in place for the last 20 years, and it really has put a cap, a clamp down on our non-residential development. So while we're doing everything we can to encourage more affordable housing, we have almost 12% of our housing stock now is permanently devoted to affordable housing, we're limiting our amount of non-residential as we have over the last 20 years. So it was limited through Mejeree to 3 million square feet. What we found was that we only used, over the last 20 years, about half of that, about 1.5 million square feet. And so the question then became, well, what would be the appropriate, going into the next 20 years, how much more should we limit this? And so that became the foundation, if you will, of our DIR analysis, and we looked at what would be an appropriate range of growth for non-residential. And what the community and the planning commission and council directed us to do was to look at somewhere between 1 to 2 million square feet, somewhere in that range. And so that's what the DIR does. It looks at, well, what are the impacts of, you know, if you were to build out a million more new, and this is new net residential, it's not infill or redevelopment, what would those impacts be? So where we are at the stage of the process, and this is, I think, a good example, there's a number of issues, and you raised the issue about unit sizes and density, and that's another key one for us. So we're at the process now of working through with our planning commission where, what the direction should be, given those four alternatives and the variety of different impacts they may have, how can we mix and match, if you will, some of these policies so that we meet as many of the objectives that promote a more sustainable community and region, and yet minimize the amount of environmental impacts that are identified in the DIR? So, long story short, in terms of what we're proposing, you know, it's, Plan Santa Barbara is, and I don't want to say arbitrarily, but again, we looked at, just as we did with the historic trends of residential units that are, we're projecting about 2,800 if we maintain that rate. Same thing with the non-residential, if we look at about 1.5, and that, when you add in approved pending projects, that sort of thing, and sphere of influence, it gets you around 2 million. But, you know, there's certainly a lot of community interest in can we ratchet that down further without strangling the economy? And right now, as I'm sure everybody's aware, economic vitality is on everybody's mind, but we've been pretty successful, frankly, at redevelopment and infill and not necessarily creating a lot of new net square footages. So, you know, that and affordable housing are, you know, two of the key questions that, you know, we're dealing with.
Is there going to be any attempt to pace the growth? I mean, in other words, if you build, if you want to build 200,000 square feet, there's got to be X number of housing units that go along with that to meet the housing demand?
Yes, that's exactly the way, and again, we commonly refer to it Mejeree, our current growth management program works, is we have six different categories of types of development, and you have to be within the allotted square footage for that type of a development, but with the strong caveat that you can't create any more traffic impacts, no more housing impacts, and of course, water is huge. We have to have the water resources to do this. And Mejeree was conceived, you know, shortly after the drought in the 80s, and so that was fresh on our mind and continues to be, that, you know, living within our resources, you know, we take that, we take that seriously in terms of, you know, our future development and our quality of life.
Now, Mejeree ends, though, does it not, at some?
Mejeree ended, actually, last year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we extended it for three more years until we finalize this process and come up with the son or daughter of Mejeree.
I see, okay. And before I get to you, Commissioner Valencia, let me just ask one more question. There was something in one of Mr. Imhoff's slides that talked about transportation safe and convenient, and with so much of your growth planned on sort of the western edge of the city, budding the county, how, what do you envision for this safe and convenient transportation? Is it just, when I'm thinking of that, I'm thinking of public transportation, of course, that's MTD, which is sort of not within your jurisdiction, it's an independent agency. So how, what is the thinking about the convenience aspect of it? Because I think we'd all like to see the headways along Hollister, out into the county and into the city, perhaps, increased, but that's, again, depending upon the number of riders and so on and so forth. But maybe you can speak a little moment about that?
I'd be happy to. That's a great question, one that I have a real interest in, personal interest. I happen to live just on the other side, in an incorporated part of the county. Safe and convenient transportation is, it means a number of things, and as you mentioned along State Street there, we are blessed with excellent transit service. Last year, MTD improved the headways to 12 minutes, or decreased the headways to 12 minutes during the commute hours, and for the line, the 6 and 11, that pass right through there by Lacumbra Plaza. So that is very convenient, and they saw an incredible, I can't remember the statistics, Ms. Fisher was, executive director, was stating last week that their ridership increased when they decreased the headways. So that's the convenient part of it, but also the safe and other types of modes are equally as important to us. And so, for example, in that area of Lacumbra Plaza and Five Points, I mean, a lot of people get in their car and they drive from one shopping center to the other, and it's all about surface parking and kind of auto-dominated retail. So the idea is looking at the future vision of those areas, what could happen out there to create more of a village atmosphere? And we held a quite successful Charette series out in Upper State Street, and what people, the community came up with ideas of like, creating more of a village out there, creating more roadway, parallel access to State Street, so that you could use your feet and ride your bike, and you weren't, it wasn't so dominated by the automobile. And of course, creating more housing, that's an ideal place for us to add some housing there, and perhaps a little park there where the, where the parking lot drops off there at State Street in front of Macy's, you know, that would be an ideal place to have a park. And so there's a lot of opportunities, a lot of exciting ideas that could go on up there, but they would be in tandem with what we feel are important transportation, creating, or supplementing, I should say, our transportation system in a way that gives an option to people to take something other than the automobile in a healthy way.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your quarterly sales, or retail sales in the community were a neighborhood of $300 million, and they're down about 20%. How does that affect your DIR? I mean, surely that means a lot.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Valencia, yeah, absolutely, that's important to us. Economic vitality, as I said, is important for everyone. You know, typically in the DIR, the economics aren't required, it's not a required part of doing an DIR, however, we have looked at some of the implications, particularly in terms of the jobs housing balance and how that's being affected. You know, what we have found is that, and it's no surprise, when you don't have affordable housing, it causes, you leak people, you leak your employees, they end up having to commute in from Ventura and Santa Maria, and you lose your socioeconomic diversity. You begin to, only a certain segment of your community can afford to live here. But to answer your question directly, in terms of have we looked at what the impact of the recession has been on our future planning, that isn't something in particular that we've looked at, short answer.
Because support services, police and fire and public works are very important, and yet you're proposing to look to expand in the future, and as you're looking to expand the income that's coming to you that helps pay for these purposes, the general fund is being depleted by 20%. It surely must be a real critical point in your discussions with the council concerning the future growth plans.
Absolutely, and one of the real linchpins of this plan is being able to be responsive and adaptive in a timely way. Our Mejeree growth management program has been very effective in managing our growth and having certain findings in place that, you know, we don't have an impact on traffic, we don't have an impact on housing or water. And what we're looking to do is expand that whole system, if you will, of monitoring and feedback to include things like public services, so that, you know, when we look at our resources, if we find that, you know, over the next five years, we're not going to have sufficient, you know, fire and police resources to serve X amount of development, then we'll be able to have that ability to make those adjustments in a short term rather than having to wait for 20 years for the next update of the general plan. So we call that our adaptive management program.
Mr. Ledbetter, I have a question on the proposal for a 250-foot setback from 101. You know, as I look at some of these maps, is, in a built environment to make these changes is going to be pretty difficult for any new development, I guess you could do that if you tear down stuff and increase the, but perhaps you can speak a moment to that?
Yes, yes, Chair Brown. It's actually, the Air Resources Board has a requirement of 500 feet
Right.
From high-traveled corridors such as the 101. And it's somewhat, somewhat in place still, exactly what kind of setback we're going to end up with there in terms of building, and whether this is going to be short-term, yeah, and how long it'll be in place. So, you know, for example, we had a, one of our analysis was done on our air quality told us that 250 was sufficient, and we didn't need the 500 feet. But we haven't got comments back from the Air Resources Board, and we're expecting to hear, we're waiting for the other shoe to drop on that one. And so to answer your question, I don't know exactly what the final impact of that's going to be.
Okay. Any other questions for our staff or Mr. Ledbetter? Mr. Johnson, you have any thoughts as we move towards our conclusion here?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I think one of the thoughts that the commission may have is with respect to your comment about advancing regional thinking, I think that Mr. Ledbetter and long-range planning and planning directors that we sit around the table with, and will be sitting around the table with tomorrow as part of SB CAG's Technical Planning Advisory Committee are all looking forward and have been working with SB CAG staff on developing a work program for developing the Sustainable Community Strategy under SB 375. So as these concurrent plan updates are happening, they really start to gel within the context of how we're going to meet our GHD reduction goals in terms of linking land use and regional transportation planning. So I think there's, it's very timely, I think some of the principles that the, most of the principles that the city has adopted for its general plan update certainly lend to the supporting that growth plan, Sustainable Communities Plan. It's going to be coupled, of course, next time with the, the SES is coupled with our next round of Regional Housing Needs Assessment allocation. So it's going to be interesting how this unfolds into the future, and that's why we've really wanted to work, particularly with the Eastern Galeta Valley, as it updates its plan, to anticipate how we're going to meet these, look at these regional strategies to meet our GHD reduction goals. One other point I did want to make is, and I don't want to sound like I'm correcting Mr. Ledbetter, but I think our, the counties has a different perspective on the CARB or APCD's perspective on 500 feet. That was simply a study and a recommendation, and it's not, it's not, has not been formally adopted regulation. Certainly, it's something that I think the city is taking into account, we are taking into account as we develop the Eastern Galeta Plan to make sure we're looking at the traffic volumes on 101 and other archerials to make sure that we're citing housing in a sensitive way. But there's an obvious inherent conflict with trying to put development, in particular housing, on transit corridors, and those transit corridors having trips that then trigger what some studies have shown to be obvious associated air quality issues.
I guess my last thought, and I'm not sure if you've gotten any sense from the commission, some of our concerns that you can relate to in terms of responding to or submitting your comments, but I guess my overarching concern is some of the traffic impacts to our intersections as they go westward, and if certainly the city hasn't included what happens to those LOSs, because I think that you're, you still work under those standards where the city doesn't have those standards anymore. I'm not sure what they do, but I think certainly that needs to be looked at.
Commissioner Brown, members of the commission, that is going to be one of our comments that we're going to be making, is that there's, the analysis drops off at some of the surrounding roadways and intersections in terms of their model analysis of the plan impacts. We want to see what's going to happen in, beyond the intersection of Coast Village Road and Olive Mill, for example, we want to see what's going to happen after that. So we'll be submitting some comments to that effect. It is fortunate that we are just updating our model in the Eastern Galeta Valley, so we think we can really cooperate with the city and project those volumes into our model and see what happens.
Good, okay. Commissioner Brooks, any last-minute thoughts to pass to staff?
Probably, you know, looking at the transportation issue again, I know, let's say, the tourist, you, they have the car-free Santa Barbara, I know when we have been looking at some projects in Isla Vista especially, you know, their master plan, including the Zip Cars, trying to, you know, promote people not having cars. I'm sure you've studied their plan, and, but I know I have been impressed with that, you know, the last year that we've looked at projects at Isla Vista, so I would say, you know, make sure you incorporate some of their ideas, be a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Well, since I see no other comments, I just want to thank Mr. Ledbetter for coming and briefing us and answering questions, and also for staff for going over this and providing this good, this very nice recap. I realize that most of these general plans are voluminous with a lot of associated material, as I see Mr. Ledbetter with his two-inch or three-inch document over there. But I know that Santa Barbara's always been at the forefront of a lot of good environmental advances, and certainly look forward to seeing that. And hopefully, staff has gotten a sense of what are, some of our concerns are, and that you will be responding to the DIR accordingly. So with that, I think that concludes our hearing for today, unless you have something, Ms. Black? If not?
Madam Chair, no, I think we're finished for the day.
Okay, great, and then we'll see you all next week then, so we'll adjourn for the day. Thank you.